And those that wish to speak again, or for that matter for the first time. If it's your first time, we will allow the seven minutes. If you've already been up to the microphone, we'll be asking you to limit it to three minutes. And your comments hopefully are going to be a little bit different than the comments the first time. So the microphone is open. Come on, introduce yourself and your address. And you can have all my counsel here, I have almost all the staff here, so we're good to go.
Hello, I'm Darren Ternellisim. I'm not very good at public speaking, but I hope I made it through this a little again, too rude, but I'm on the Gargari side on this one. It's an old mariner, in fact. They've worked hard here, put a lot of money into this town, put us on the map directly through RMR only. I mean, yes, we've got CMH, we've got other businesses here that have put us there, but I don't think the city council really understands the scope of this. We have enough land within the city boundaries already that is slated for hotels, and hotels, and campgrounds, and whatever, that is not developed. Why are you guys pushing developers there? Why are we developing land that's had been taken out of RIAAALR, which I never even had a vote on, because I can't vote for the city, because I live out past this project, and I live in CSIRD. This has just been fast-tracked, it's been one-sided, it's been... Like, it almost smells funny, it really does, how this got through everybody to this point. When this land was in the AALR, what's wrong with saving maybe a little bit of land for our wildlife, for our deer, for the herding of spring fawns and stuff? This land is very beneficial for that. Are we just going to close this whole mountain in with some hotels and golf courses and stuff? Let's open it up a little bit, and let nature take over a little bit. I mean, come on, this isn't just about money all the time. Let's think about it. This is a nice little spot, it should be just, you know, okay, a little treehouse hotel, good thing, but let's not go over the board here with 800 rooms and let them develop whatever you want. This is crazy. We've got enough land within Rockstone right now that you guys have in your control, you don't need any more, you certainly don't need RALR and that stuff, that have taken out somehow, I don't know how they managed to get that out. But anyway, like Lonnie says, if she were on, this was the route it was going, it would have never been taken out. So take that into consideration, and take into consideration the people that live here and have lived there for 30 or 40 years. This ain't for everybody. We've got enough hotel room sites in Rockstone. Let's keep them in Rockstone, not in Evansdale or wherever you want to call them. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chris Hallam, and I'm from Evansville. And, you know, Shelley, I've got a good idea there, but I have a bit of a problem. I said, sure, Shelley and David are nice people, got a big concept there, but I have a problem here. We're not zoning this for Shelley and David. You change this zoning, you're going to change it back. They die, the zoning is there. They go bankrupt, the zoning is there. So let's think about it. What's the big hurry? The second concern is, I've heard a lot about agreements between the city and the developers, and the understandings, and business decisions that have been based on promises. I sure hope you guys talk to the lawyers before you make this decision. Let's be violent and soon a couple of times when it comes to this resort, we don't need an idea. So think about it, slow down. I think commercial development, and if you read the zoning that's been applied for, they're not lying. They can build a lot of commercial development at that location. And we need our commercial development in the downtown to make sure this town is vibrant. Think about it, slow down.
My name is Shelley Evans, 3669 Pathon Road. I have speech, but I've thrown it away. I can always speak from the heart, I can always speak from our perspective in this town and this community. David does all the zoning and all the reasons and all the why, and I can only tell you that we are here, and I can tell you honestly, for all the good reasons. It's interesting to see this group of people, all lovely smart people, this tour, you know, well, conventions and this, and the fear that has been put to this town by this group of people is really quite unbelievable. The kind of amount of fear campaign between phone calls in people's homes, people that actually don't even care about you or me. Like, they don't care what the resort may be, maybe they don't care about me. They're in home, and they are having dinner, they're putting their kids to bed, they're doing stuff, and they're getting the world of Tom Gaguardi back to their house. I'm not going to sit here and talk about my 20 years of resort experience, I'm not going to sit here and talk about all the people at IML in the industry, I'm not going to dispute, get into an argument with some of the people here that have all their facts, because I'm sorry, I don't agree, I'm entitled not to agree. I'm just asking mayor and council, tonight seemed interesting, there's been a lot of people come up, I don't know if they've come up because of the fear campaign that has been out there. The last gentleman just spoke, there is commercial happening there, it is doom and gloom. We have a vision for this town, and we have a vision for this town, for the people at Rockstone. We believe in this town. My kid goes to school in this town, I shop in this town, I eat in this town, I walk my dog in this town, I ride my horse in this town, I love this town. We are not competition, we are not parasitical, we are not just some developer that's going to come in, give 900 rooms for the love of God, complimentary to your resorts. We will bring visitors to your ski club, and like another gentleman said, we won't bring year-round visitors, it's just not about the Gargaris. It is about the people of this town, it's about the people that live here, and it's about being proactive and creating something really special. All this doom and gloom, you have five years to get your shit together. Like, I don't understand the issue. And I'm just asking you, please, you've heard a lot of stuff from the other side at The Last Minute, what you haven't heard, they have not called us, they haven't asked for a meeting, we've driven to the city to try to see them, we've sent emails to them, let's meet, let's talk, let's communicate, nothing, nothing. And for them to stand up and say, oh, this is the first we've ever heard of it, we have tried, they're sick of us trying, they actually don't even answer anything else anymore. Their lawyer comes up and meets with us, and that's it. So all I'm asking you, tonight is tonight, and I just don't want to have happen, which may be happening with the mall campaign, that the few people that actually came out here tonight to say, to speak against us, that outweighs the 80% of the people that wrote in and took the time to voice their views. And I know the council, and I know the mayor, look at those people that weren't here tonight, because we are a community, we have kids that we have to get to bed, I'm exhausted, we have other things in our lives. The other people that put in those letters don't have the best of interest in me, they have the best of interest in this town. So I'm asking, please, think about all those people that wrote in, and not just this doom and gloom naysayer, that this complimentary, and I can't stress it enough, complimentary hotel to their resort is not going to kill Northland Development. I thank you very much.
Robert Quodick. It appears, I wasn't paying a pinch back a few months ago when you did the annexation and all that kind of stuff. I quite frankly couldn't see if you did it, but I'll give you three words, if you want to write it down. It's called officially induced error. And think of the bottom of this. The first error was analyzing the property. And I don't think that council was given enough information to make a property-upform decision, and that's why you're sitting here today facing the reality of the inapplication with 800 hotel rooms in it. You can rescind that annexation, and I urge you to do so. Thank you.
Yeah, I've been in our worship council, I haven't been in a council in a while, I've been down in Nelson last year, but I've missed you, good people. You know, I know, I've always been off the rails or something, but, you know, there's road to life and making money. All the people, my friends here, we're not here for the money, we're here for the lifestyle and to live in this wonderful place. So I think rock and stone needs to be really careful not to get carried away with overdevelopment. You know, we need to find a balance, like, this is a beautiful place to live, and, but it doesn't need to be a whistler or a tail of your mind or a jack's pole. You know, find a balance, educate our kids, take care of people. There's a lot of people in this town who bear like a $2 to rub together, so, you know. I have had a care rate that most of the millionaires or the 1,500 units we need to build, but as a spokesman, I, you know, I will sound a little Englishman a little bit, you know, let them know with that treehouse hotel, but maybe not, maybe not eight hundred bedrooms after that, just, you know, let them know that treehouse, but don't see that interference with the RAR, you know, issue back off. I think everyone will find the compromise and listen with that way together, and I don't envy the council, I'm just pure joy because it's our goal, so good luck.
Hi there, I'm Copyriner, and I live up at 313 First Streets. As you know, I have a guest house in town, and I guess that would make me a parasite too, because in the winter, every one of my guests is a skier. Somebody comes in and they're not a skier, I'm shocked, but that's four months of the year. I still have to run my business for the other eight months, and we all do. We have bad shoulder seasons, and we've got summer with one-nighters, and I'm afraid that, you know, three-minute hike ride isn't going to keep people here for more than a couple of hours because they're in the lineup. But what we need to think about is all the hotelites in this town, whether we need hotel rooms. Now, Chris Tucker said that, sorry, Rich Tucker, said that the RIA letter says that we don't need any more hotels, and that's not what the RIA letter says. What it says is that we were told that if this goes ahead with this zoning application, that they will halt any more development if they have it, and to me, that's bull in the hole. So, clearly, the RIA doesn't think that we don't need no hotels. Freddie was just about to build his third hotel. We have, I was just across the alley, and finding out about this new fun adventure park. That's going to bring more people, and that's going to come in the next year or two. We need to build more hotels, we don't have enough rooms. As a member of the RIA, we've been given a growth charter that shows the 2% that the RIA collects, that's from hotel heads and beds, and every month, every year, it has gone up and up and up. It is a growth charter that any town would be absolutely proud of having. So it seems to me the only people in this room who don't believe in this town, who don't believe we're getting better, who don't believe we're growing, is this little line of people here. So please, look at this re-zoning application, and that's what your job is, to say that's the best thing for this town, and the best use of that property, and I argue that it is. Thank you.
Well, it's been a very interesting night. Thank you, everybody, for attending and giving your input. I just want to counter with a couple of points that were raised. We heard about competition. This has nothing to do with competition. We compete in every day, in every community, in every market where we are. This is about, if you want to compete with the real... Our doors open, we have 300 acres of land at the bottom of the resort that we would love to have Treehouse Hotel built up. We would love that. And then there's investment in the resort that helps to grow, and we can breathe and assign enough money to further develop the resort. Secondly, we talked a lot about the NDA and Master Plan, that deal was made in good spirit, and we signed on to it. It's not just something, why don't we just share that? Is that what we're all suggesting? I hope not. But I'm going to read the last passage which I read. Can you speak a little closer to the mic, and direct your comments on the script? Okay. We need to be clear, this matter is not about the Treehouse Hotel. It was originally proposed, that it was originally proposed during the annexation process. What it is about is the rezoning of 18 acres of land at the base of the resort to CD18, giving the proponent and future developers or purchasers of this land a material competitive advantage that could see development of the resort baselands delayed for years, if not decades. That's what we're talking about. It's a competitive advantage to, really, that's the ability of the resort to move forward. And that, I will close.
Just finally, a couple of points have caught up. I think we touched on the master, the mountain soul court, but at the beginning, saying this is not part of the land. So, you know, I appreciate the comments by Psyche Brown, that that land, quite literally, by law, is not part of that area. Apart from the team bench here, we've heard comments from the guy from Michael Helskine against the development, says he's got no affiliation, I believe they've been operating this Wow House for the last couple of years, and they're doing it here this year. And then we had objections from Mr. Brown, who's also a business partner in the adventure park with... So apart from that, we've heard comments which are in light, and as the other, we'll comment on the website or on the input that have been in light. Thank you.
I don't, well, I would just say that, well, I'd like us to keep our comments based on the rezoning and UCP. Just for correction, David, is that I don't believe that Michael Helskine has been using, yeah, Tito Pastel has been using audio consent, so... Microphone is open, and I guess I probably should have started at the very start and saying, I would like the comments directed to me, I would like the comments directed towards what the application is. I'll leave it at that for now. Okay.
Good evening. I wasn't planning to speak this evening, but there's just been a couple of facts that instead of hotel association, they're not true, and maybe I'll just actually read a couple of excerpts. I guess first, we are not against hotel development. In fact, recognize future hotel development is a byproduct of our ongoing success. The difference in this instance is competition fairness and the financial word replaced on RMR during each phase of development, during development outlined in the Master Plan, which essentially earns the right to develop more beds by adding ski infrastructure. We understand ski lifts can be financed and parked through the sale and development of RMR real estate. This burden is not placed on any surrounding lands and allow competitors to develop at substantial load costs. So I've never said that we're against other hotels. Matter of fact, there's lands available for them in town right now, and we have no problems with people wanting to develop those lands. It's all about fairness, it's about competitive fairness. We've made the same argument with bed and breakfasts, it's about competitive fairness, and we think there's some competitive disadvantages based on agreements that are making impact, and that's really the combination of the majority of our argument.
Who are you speaking for, Norm?
I'm here representing the Hotel Association, Rockstone Accommodation Association. Just trying to clarify a few issues that people are saying we're against development, and clearly, if anybody has read our advocacy, then we're not opposed to it. But we do think that this annexation and this development creates unfair competition for the hotel, I mean, for the Resort Association. The Resort Association, not Resort Association, for RMR, sorry. You know, if I was to look at it and say, are people coming to see a hotel? Yes, they do come, they come to see all hotels. But what's really driving them here is the experience that you're going to get in an activity. Sitting on, as our association, we don't sell hotels, we sell adventures, we sell activities, we sell skiing, we sell snowmobiling, we sell all these things. If I'm going to put my money into anything, I will put it into a new lift. That's going to bring people here, that's going to create more demand, that'll build more hotels. That's the way I think our association, for the most part, for the majority, view this. But really, I just wanted to clarify, we're not opposed to the hotels, we just want competitive fairness in the marketplace.
Sorry, David, I have to bring it up, is that I would like you to leave, ask questions to me. Everyone is welcome and invited to come and speak to the microphone, regardless of any preceding affiliation. This is open public here.
I understand that, Mark, but we need some kind of identification. We need to get that from Norman.
Microphone is open for anyone that would like to come and speak.
Council, Mayor, council is here to guide development. Without council providing guidance, we basically would have people just building whatever they want, wherever they want, and that doesn't build and facilitate a proper smart community anywhere. So I think your purpose is to guide development. What I'm adding here was a little bit of checks and measures, I wasn't trying to put a scare tactic. Under the curtain zoning, after reviewing it, I'm letting everyone know what could possibly be built on this property. And when I mention commercial-type enterprise, that is under the definition of hotels, retail stores, personal services, that's allowed. I'm just letting everyone be aware of, that's the potential exposure you have. And council, when you are making zoning decisions, you don't say what this lovely couple may build, you build it for what a third party may build on that site. What is the potential that could be built on that site, and that's what you plan right now. This is the, you know, a lot of people voted or mentioned the favorite of this Treehouse Hotel, saying it's very unique, it's something that'll draw people to this community. Will it revise this zoning application to specify and deal with only this aspect of it? Why are you broadening this entire zoning to be an issue for future developers? As I said, you are essentially creating a village on these 18 acres under this current zoning application.
Pretty gloomy. A little dark, you guys. My name is Gary, I live in Southside, and quite a crowd of lickers, mate. You guys know, town of a negative change, definitely negative for socially and environmentally responsible movements for, and see a lot of different things around the town between different developments. Bottom line is, it's a zoning application, it's applicable to a development, it's also a privilege, and the mind saying, I see these zonings that give somebody more freedom for some imagination, some creative and innovative building techniques rather than our compartmentalized zoning systems that we currently have. So I see this as a positive opportunity to go forward, looking at Rockstone as a unique community, in a place where I'm willing to stand out in front of a bunch of people, I'd rather be at home playing my guitar. But I do see it as a really neat opportunity for us to go forward and look at some comprehensive developments, and what those comprehensive developments, contextual developments can bring for us. Community shows it is made for big block stores and lackluster developments, finally, something very creative, potentially something great, but also easy to work into some high efficiency, sustainable developments, maybe creating some energy policies to be in the future of a potential development, or perhaps for the resort, to look at some options for sustainability and our operating potential. As there's been nothing in regards to energy efficiency, or the future, we constantly talk about the economy and the finances that are, what are our futures going to be? But the reality is, the future's in our trees. It's also the history of Canada. We have a country that's virtually 150 years old, but we have trees that are thousands of years old, so I think I've more choice to dwell. I'd like to take the opportunity to encourage other developers to build responsibility, build sustainable and for our children's children. We only get one chance, so go to yours.
Looking to the public for any more comments for a first time. I will call three times, and then ask for the public here to be closed. Comments from the public a second time. I knew you were going to get up and down. I had to.
Again, you make sweet writing. There's been a lot of fear mongering in comments about an 800-room hotel, building another village, another downtown core up on the hill. My understanding from what I've seen and people I've talked to is, due to the undulating terrain, that really wouldn't be feasible. With this concept of these plots on stilts and trees, I think it's a very unique idea, and it deals with that tree, it's made for this site. I think to say that we have properties downtown, and there's hotels, we'll have a lot of plots on the sticks downtown, I don't think so. So look at the site, look at the opportunity we have here, and realize that this is a good potential to move forward on a unique idea. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
My name is Alan Slade, working town, born here, a couple of years after Freddie. Buddy's got spirit, eh? I never come to these things, but I will never miss. One thing I came here to hear about tonight was what either side is going to do to contribute to taxes in town. And I pay what I think is high taxes for a daughter at home, but in a really nice neighborhood. I live next to Mark, I live next to Fred. Neighborhood is full of kids, full of families, and I really appreciate that in Rockstone. One thing that I also really appreciate is competition. See, these guys here made very strong, they're honed by competition. Freddie, honed by competition, so I think competition is good, and I look forward to it. We use competition at work in the business that I do, and I just can't wait to see it in action. So I'm pro-development, I love competition, and I don't envy you guys, but I'm for, I'm for further development. Thank you.
I have called for any more comments a second time. I'm going to ask council if they have any comments or questions that they would like clarified with staff.
I have a couple of questions of Mr. Strack, if I could have clarified them. There's been a lot of talk today about what can be built on the resort, or on the proposed 18 acres that Mr. Evans is putting forward. I've heard 812 hotels, I've heard 800... I've heard eight to twelve hotels, I've heard eight hundred units, I've heard all sorts of things. But what I'd like from Mr. Stracken is a question of what can be built there in terms of hotels?
The way that the zoning district itself is set up, it doesn't control the development by unit count. It controls it by floor space ratio and site coverage. So there's certain areas within the development, proposed dominant area that have been delineated as private park space, and others that have been delineated as space for development. The square footage of that would be calculated out when they created walks, that's about a sixty thousand square foot print, three times over, so those would be three sites that have been identified. And a period of your package is having the potential to carry a level of development. There is some topographical challenges to carry through the site. There's two major steep slopes that go through the site in the middle. The proposal is not to build it as a box, it's to build it with a variety of components. And to visualize what the box would look like, it would be approximately sixty thousand square foot print for four stories in height. It would be taller if they went with the underground parking component. The actual development itself, there isn't a layout for the site at this point in time. There is a requirement for them to complete a master development agreement for this site prior to adoption of the bylaw. So there is asked on some level of certainties of what's going to be developed on the site. And that master development agreement comes back through Counsel and establishes road locations, service locations, building locations. In order for that engineering work to be completed, that has to be established, and that carries through with the zoning and the potential future ones as well.
But I'd like to just take that one step farther, if you don't mind, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you mentioned the bonus density of the underground parking, that could add one and a half stories onto the height of the building. It takes the floor area ratio, it takes it from a one to one to a one point five to one. And the lot coverage goes from thirty-five percent to fifty, could go to fifty percent coverage of the building area. Unless I'm mistaken.
Your worship, these things are interconnected, that's correct. If they do do full underground parking for components, then that component has an additional floor space ratio that's permitted, as well as additional site coverage. But the way the zone is designed, you can't build five stories and still have the site coverage. The higher you go, the smaller the footprint. That's the way the floor space ratio works with psychology. That's how those two components interact with each other. So if you do a low profile building, you can build a bigger footprint, up to that fifty percent. But if you go to multi-stories, you need to reuse your footprint in order to get that happening. That's the way this works, and it's the way that we control density within commercial districts. We don't do it by the number of hotel rooms, per se. We do it by the amount of square footage, the density of the box that's being created, is how we do the zoning by law. It's competition. Without growth. Questions?
One more question about, everybody's talking about commercial uses on that property in the village, and I hear from some proponents, or from the proponent, that it's not going to be commercial, there're not going to be retail there. What's the story in terms of that?
The use of the primary uses that are permitted in the proposed zoning districts are accommodation. It is correct that you are allowed to have, within the hotel itself, some additional uses, which are generally associated with the hotel, but they are not permitted to be primary uses within the zoning district. The other accessory uses or secondary uses that are permitted are also associated with that type of accommodation. So you would not be permitted to have freestanding retail uses within there, which will be associated with the village type development. And further to that, you wouldn't establish those types of roadways through your MVA. There isn't a proposal to create a high street or a main street orientation within this development that would be confined to the village.
Those are my questions, thank you.
Just a couple more questions for staff. Regarding primary and secondary uses, there was comments made today that's more specific in nature than those are outlined in the primary and secondary uses, such as a conference center or a doctor's office. When you look at the actual wording of the bylaws, it allows for three uses. One of the first is accommodation, pods, and hotel. Could you speak, Dean, to what would be allowed in those secondary uses, and whether some of the comments such as retail or doctor's office, that kind of thing, would actually be permitted? Because the wording in the secondary uses is somewhat vague.
Your worship, the reference is actually to the zoning bylaw lobby itself, and its definition of hotel, which allows for a number of accessory uses as defined part of the hotel. So this is a carryover from the zoning bylaw, the existing bylaws we have it now, which lists a number of uses, including the lobby, restaurant, public dining, licensed beverage, banquet rooms, retail stores, personal services, indoor recreation, entertainment, and conference facilities. But this is within a hotel. It's a part of the definition, which is in our existing bylaw. The proposed CD zone included definitions for new uses, but did not include new definitions for existing uses. Hotels as an existing use within our zoning bylaw established the needs.
Your worship, one more question, if I might. I think what people like to grab onto is exactly how many rooms we're talking about. One of the formula that Psyche Brown mentioned earlier today that's used in master development areas, formulating the agreements, and sorry, I don't remember the numbers, I think it's two beds, and four beds, and eight beds, depending on what company you're going to talk about here. With the permitted density, which is at thirty-five, area coverage is thirty-five percent, and development density is one point two five, without the density bonusing, and I believe it was two, with the density bonusing at lot cover to fifty percent. Can we, for everyone's information here, crush those numbers into a cover? So I realize you just said, you know, that's not the way the zoning works, but can we do that?
Your worship, you certainly could. If you were to take, for example, a hotel that's best western, it would be approximately one and a half best westerns for each of the three sites. As a size, they have a number of different rooms within that hotel, so you'd be looking at possibly two hundred rooms if you were using that particular format. But if you were to go to more of a hostel, hostel type format, you would get any more rooms. So that's one of the reasons we don't generally use that. I believe the resort branch uses that model because they're trying to translate combination to spheres, trying to connect beds to people on a steel, and connect a lift to the rooms. With municipality, we're not generally directly connecting those two points, we're more about the density on the site as far as building, as well as the density on the site for form and character and structure. We're not directly connecting our evaluation of development necessarily to the number of spheres of capacity on the bed.
As we're getting closer to the end, I just want to explain to everybody what is going to be happening next. I'll be calling for the last time for any public comments. I'll be asking for a motion to close the public hearing. Counsel then has an option of dealing with third reading right now, if they so choose. One of the other options is that I could be re-convening this, close the public hearing, and then re-convening a special meeting tomorrow, where Counsel will deliberate on what it's going to do about third reading. So I just wanted to clear to everybody what the options are, we're looking for. Did I miss anything? So right now, we are at, I'm asking for a third and final time, if there are any comments from the public. Carrying none, I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing, moved by Counsel Nixon, seconded by Counsel Solz. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Public hearing is now closed. It's now up to Counsel to decide if...
Thank you. And I'm Counsel Scott Duke. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out, this has been an absolute airathon, for sure. It starts with your counsel, we start at three o'clock, but I know that doesn't hold a candle to the amount of work that the Glaries have put into building the resort, the amount of work that Dave Evans has put into this project. So we're all a part of it, and it's incredible to see this, many people come out. When we became counselors, we definitely thought that we were going to be pushing a little bit of our agenda, I'm sure. Each of us thought, okay, we're going to make an impact. But the reality is that when you get in this seat, you're a listener, and that's what we're supposed to do. We sit here, we listen to the community, we have read through, I don't know, I know I've put ten hours over the course of the weekend in reading through all the material just on this one particular item. So there's definitely been a lot of thought that's gone into it. What I'd like, and in that listening, this is what I heard from tonight, this is what I've heard from all the comments that have come through. Everyone, for the most part, is in favor of the Treehouse Hotel. They think it's going to be a great thing for the community, it's definitely going to be different, it's going to draw people to town. And, but they are concerned about the eighteen acres, and they're concerned about what it will do to the resort, who's built up this far. So I'm going to put a motion forward here, and it's up to Counsel, I can turn it down, whatever, but I'm going to table this right now. A motion to table third reading, so the proponent can speak with city staff about developing the Treehouse Hotel on the five acre parcel, and alter the CD zoning not to include all the eighteen acres at this time.
Looking for a second for that motion. Counsel Solz, second this motion. Now is discussion on the motion. I guess I would like to refer to Dean, is there any problems with that motion?
Your worship, it restructures the proposal almost completely.
Speak a little closer.
It restructured the proposal. You are taking, as prior to reservation, you're restricting it to twenty-five percent, and the remaining seventy-five percent of the property would be rezoned to...
It could be amended to be rezoned to our one.
Is that acceptable with second? Is this following proper procedures or any along with the procedure of the year?
It would require that the developer or applicant group agree with the proposal in order to do that, or else we are going back for a second public hearing.
Any discussion on the motion? Counsel Nixon.
I'm just worried that this proponent has put a lot of work into his proposal. He's brought it forward with a five-year covenant agreed to by the city to not move forward on seventy-five percent of his property. That gives our Mark five years to finally show us what their updated master plan is that I've been asking for since 2012. And I just think that in the fairness that this proponent's come forward here tonight, that we should be respecting what he's asked for, and going ahead with the motion as it is in our packages. I'm not going to vote to support the amended motion.
I'm going to speak to this motion, seeing as how I seem to have, except for a couple of the only people in the room, the most longevity with resort development, of course, except for Fred Burris, who's escaped since nineteen forty-eight. But all the meetings and all the hours that I spent over the years, I knew that this resort was going to have a huge positive economic impact on this community. It was going to stop our kids from leaving town, it was going to bring new people into town. And then you fast forward, when I ran again for mayor, I met with David, had talks with him, and he talked about the Treehouse Hotel. I go, "The Treehouse Hotel is very cool, I like the idea, I've supported Treehouse Hotel from the very start." And I also know that when you bring property into the city, it has to be, it has to have zoning on it. So this is one parcel, and if you're going to put a Treehouse Hotel on it, it has to have zoning that matches with that. But there's huge, there's implications for that, and implications that I didn't put together, I didn't know about when I originally supported this whole concept. And I've said several times, I'll say it again, I support the Treehouse Hotel, I do not support all the other development that could go, commercial development that could go on. This motion that was on the floor right now is something that I brought up a few weeks back, I think it's the right thing to do. I look at how this rezoning and this application has evolved over the last month or so, and it's unfortunate that it's down to almost a popularity contest instead of what it actually is. It's rezoning, it's land use, it's economic development and the economic future of the community, and that's what it gets down to, because we don't, if the rezoning was to go ahead with what we've been talking about prior to this motion, we don't know who the players are going to be next year, next week, five years down the road, but the zoning is there. And the motion that's on the floor, I think is the right way to go, and I support it, knowing full well that I am not going to fetter future Counsel's decisions, and this property could be subject of a rezoning in the future, and it'll be Counselors of that day that are going to have to decide. And I'm hoping that the resort becomes a lot more mature, where it can, it's not going to worry about this development on its doorstep. But the Treehouse Hotel, I think is a, is going to be a great addition to the community, and I encourage the rest of Counsel to vote in favor of this motion as been performed. Is there any other discussion on this motion?
Your worship, just in speaking towards this motion, the intent of our motion is to make a win-win situation. I've listened to both sides, I've read all this information time and time again in the last few days. And when I came into this public hearing this evening, I came in with the thought of fifty plus one percent of making a decision, and a positive to go ahead with the original zoning. But having heard all the history, having heard the agreements that have been put in place by previous councils, and all the work that's been done, and knowing full well of what's been done in other communities where developments have gone broke, I reconsider that. However, I have friends who have been hurt by what's been done at the resort, who have been made, I have, my family is, my wife's family goes back generations in this community, so I understand the connection, as the Glaries have brought forward. But at this point, I think this would be a win-win for everyone, having the developer speak to the staff. So I'm going to encourage the balance of Counsel to vote positively for this, I think this would be a positive for the community as a whole.
I'd like to see, the way I think about this process, which started back with the annexation, prior to most of our time on Counsel here, following through to the rezoning applications, that ourselves as a Counsel rely on professional advice of staff to... to bring forth the ideas, take us through all of the zoning decisions, implications of everything that we're going to do. My concern, this started about three years ago. My concern right now is what the implications will be for the developer. And I would like to ask Counselor Duke, if this motion in the way it's structured is something that you consulted on staff with to find out the implications of what would happen after this point? I'd also like to find a little bit more information about other options. Because I don't disagree with you, Counselor Duke Scott. You know, I hear there's a desire to have win-win. I saw a lot of acrimony between two parties today when we were hearing everyone. I wish that weren't the case. I really wish we could have some more partnership or some more, so a little bit more win-win proposal. But my real concern with the last minute motion that's very different from what's been brought forward through the process now is unanticipated consequences. So I'd like to address those questions to Counselor Duke as well as to Mr. Strachan, if there are any other options that would be more preferable, that would have the same intent?
Counselor, I did not speak to staff before about this motion. This was just something that I was working on throughout the course of this evening. The way I saw it, there was a couple of ways that they could go and table this and deal with it at a later date, or we could read the motions that are in the agenda that we have. I think if we were to read the ones that are in the agenda? Do you want me to read the motion again?
Sure.
Motion to table the third reading so the proponent can speak with staff about developing the Treehouse Hotel on the five acre parcel and alter the CD zoning to not include all 18 acres at this time. And there was another amendment to that that just said that outside that five acres, the CD zone would be R1.
Can I just get some clarifications? Because I'm really confused now. Are you asking that you just go back to staff? Or are you asking that we absolutely change the zoning so that it only affects that small portion?
I'm asking that it is tabled is the number one thing that I'm asking right now. And if in that time it's tabled, the proponent can speak with staff about changing it. So really what I'm asking for is just a Treehouse Hotel to have more clarity. And this is how it compensates in the motion so that it makes sense over there.
And here's my concern about this. And it's the same as the concern that Counselor Orlando has made. This is a last minute situation that we're taking now. And I, you know, in fairness to Mr. Evans, he's put a lot of time and effort into bringing this application before council. And for us to arbitrarily change the rules of the game on him without, as you said, Counselor Duke, some consultation with staff or something like that is a major concern to me. There's been money, time and energy put in by Mr. Evans on this. And as I said, for us, the arbitrary change of rules of the game, I think, is incredibly unfair. So I have no problem with if we table it for a short period of time to explore that potential win-win situation. But I certainly don't want to get into a situation where, and I oppose an amendment to the motion that just changes it arbitrarily without that consultation, not only the staff, but with Mr. Evans as to what he feels about that.
Okay, I have to jump in here. Okay, it's, I guess I didn't hear the first part of the table reading. We actually don't have a motion on the floor to table. I didn't thought you were changing the motion to say 25% of the property, Treehouse Hotel, the rest of the property, Secret Valley Residential. That's the part that I heard. So we either put the motion that's on there on the floor and then table it or just reconvene tomorrow. And I'm going to suggest that council be at lunchtime. The public hearing portion is closed. There'll be no more input from the public. Counselor Nixon?
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that the official community plan bylaw number 2109 be read a third time.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second for that motion?
We have a second portion.
What I said to Counselor Duke is that he said there was a motion. I said there was not a motion. You put a motion to table, but there was not a motion on the floor. So it was not a motion. This is the problem with doing things at this time in the act. Counselor Nixon has put a motion on the floor for a physical community plan bylaw be read a third time. Correct?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second for that motion? Counselor Orlando? Now we're having discussion on putting this motion into third reading.
Your worship, I'll just repeat what I said before. Mr. Evans has come in a fair and democratic fashion, knocked on City Hall's door. We didn't have to go last to him. And he is asking to develop his plan. He is giving a five year, 219 covenant to give RMR time to get their plan together and show us what they can do. And I support this whole argument.
Would anyone like to say something before I do?
Another comment with respect to that. I think this is just an incredibly difficult situation. We understand, we understand what RMR brings to this community and we understand the importance of RMR and what it brings to this community. But we also understand that we need to move forward with development. And part of the problem that I see in all of this is we're, this city council, this city is caught between a rock and a hard place. Because we have Mr. Evans who wants to develop. He's come here saying, listen, I want to invest money in Redmond St. And we need investment of this kind in Redmond St. It's really important. What we're missing from RMR, and Mr. Nielsen, Peter Nielsen alluded to that. There has been no communication with us about what RMR intends to do going forward. We have not heard any of your plans. We don't know what you're going to do in the next five years, in the next 10 years. We have the resort master plan that's been sitting there for many, many years. There hasn't been a lot of movement on that. I understand why, there's been some difficulties from the economy and everything else, but we haven't heard from you people. So it's an incredibly difficult situation for us because you're asking us, RMR comes to us and says, please do not put this through. But we don't know what, if we don't allow this through, what we have, what's going to happen going forward? That is the difficulty that we have. And so I'm inclined, caught, because I'm inclined to agree with the, with the, with the motion that's on the table. But on the other hand, I would love to see a win-win situation here. I would love to see RMR and Mr. Evans communicate so that it is best for this community.
I just want to say that the motion that's on the floor right now is not a win-win motion. And what I was trying to do before is I'm trying to give us a little bit of time so that we can have the proponent, talk to city staff, and we can also digest everything that's happened this evening. I would say about 30% of information that I speak about this particular project has happened this evening. A lot of stuff's happened. And to take someone, doesn't matter who it is, especially an inexperienced person who's only been on council for a year and a half and say, you're going to listen to all this and you're going to make a decision right now, it's like a reality TV show. And what I'm saying is that, yeah, I messed up saying the table or whatever, but what I'm really looking for is that little bit more time which is asked of by the community to think about this because it is a major decision. Okay? Okay, now I can make a motion to table? Okay, I'm going to make that motion to table until tomorrow.
Is there a secondary to table the motion? Counselor Solz? So no discussion on tabling? No discussion on tabling? All those in favor?
Your worship, we need a time and date for your tabling the motion.
Noon tomorrow. All those in favor? Against. Counselor Nixon votes against, the motion is carried. So we're going to reconvene this special meeting tomorrow at lunchtime. Again, just a reminder to, especially to council and to everybody in the public, the public hearing is closed. And I would be asking people from refraining, from discussing with councilors about anything to do with the public hearing. And council's going to meet at council chambers tomorrow at noon and decide on what it's going to do about, what? I need a motion to reconvene tomorrow. Trevor? All in favor? Motion is carried.